Is it running?
I think so.
Because I'll take at least four, because I can put one in my hand.
Yeah, I have them after the thing. I did some all next, but I've got six more still.
I think Rob Aaronson is a good one, because it's different.
Yes, it is. I thought of him.
I'll ask if you give it to me all out.
Sure.
How close are we here? Oh, it's seven o'clock. How are, how is our time?
Yeah, Marcus buzzer went off.
It was my asthma medicine buzzer.
It was my assistance buzzer.
So that everyone knows, that's my asthma medicine alarm that we'll get to hear on some Wednesdays.
There's a pill?
Oh, mine is not.
No, I take it before the meeting, but it stays for seven o'clock.
Maybe you should set my alarm for eight o'clock, that's why we have to be done.
Are you guys all okay and getting in?
We're okay.
Everyone's logged in?
Are you in?
Yeah.
You guys good?
You're all good?
Yeah.
Good. We've had a lot of password changes.
Oh, I ordered my announcement.
Uh, let's see, gotta get my script out.
Good evening, everyone, if you'd like to speak during tonight's public comment session, please sign in at the table in the back, and we're going to get started.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so it gets started at seven. Um, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening with the addition of Walk-on Resolution Ten B seven.
So moved, Erica.
Second, Jamaica.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion at all? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have the minutes of the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Education meeting presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice?
Second.
Anne? Any corrections, additions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that co- the motion carries too. And, um, at this time, while I'm waiting to see if we have any speakers, I will read my usual statement. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously, very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize right now that our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for one another. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments, but those will be attached to the minutes. And we will now proceed with those who have signed up. So I have Junior Hitlal first.
Hi, Junior. Good evening, Board of Education members.
Good evening.
Superintendent Sawyer. First of all, I want to thank the school, the school board for passing the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. There's a few items on the budget that I want to make the community aware of. These are very important items on the budget. One, we are adding forty-one teachers' positions, which is very important for our kids. Second, there's gonna be twenty-nine positions to improve school climate and safety in all district levels, in all schools. Third, there's gonna be Liberians, which we never have, in every school. That's, that's very important, especially for the young kids in the elementary level. Also, counselors in all schools, which is very important for kids that has special needs and kids that have issues during school days. One of the other issues I'm here tonight is regarding the Schenectady, this school district calendar. I'm going off here a little bit, but that's okay. Schenectady School District is gonna be one of the first districts in New York State to observe a Hindu holiday of Holi on the school district calendar. I was a board member, and I've been working on this since I was a board member, and continue working with current board members Bernice Rivera and the district leadership team. Holi represents the arrival of spring and the triumph of good over evil, with a significant portion of residents and students of Caribbean descent that celebrates. Again, thank you for adopting this resolution on the district calendar. There's folks here tonight that's gonna elaborate more on this holiday, and I want to thank the board for putting this on the calendar. Hopefully, it passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Amit Jagdeyoh? I'm sorry if I've mispronounced it. Good evening.
Namaste and good evening. Uh, my name is Amit Jagdeyoh. I am the president of the Hindu Society of Schenectady. Today, I and the entire Hindu community are related to be a witness of and to participate in this historic achievement of the Schenectady School District. As much as Holi is Indian, it is also very much Hindu. One of Hinduism's widely read texts encourages us to karma ne vadi kharaste ma pali shukarachana, action thy duty, reward not thy concern. Duty, a sense of responsibility to others, is what brought us all here today. I believe that this moment definitely connotes that everybody counts, everybody learns. It also celebrates the district's vision of engagement, and we are happy to be engaged and to offer services whenever called upon. My sincerest thanks to the superintendent, the school board, and all the staff involved to make this a reality. Thank you for your vote, and thank you from the Hindu community.
Thank you, Amit. Vishnu Persad?
Members of the school board, greetings and namaste. My name is Vishnu Persad. I am one of the pundits or the priests, along with other pundits, from our organization, the Schenectady Sanat and Vedig Dharma, which is located twenty-one, twelve Watts Street. Today, I not only represent our organization, but I also represent a part of the wider Hindu community. I would like to sincerely thank the superintendent of Schenectady School District for tabling this motion for a holiday to the schoolchildren, for the, for the Hindu celebration or the Hindu festival, which is Holi. I would like to point out something very important for us, because this is very significant. Holi does not spell H-O-L-Y, it is spelled H-O-L-I. And when we add day to that H-O-L-I, it becomes a holiday. So I think it's very significant for us to understand that. Recognizing the event of Holi in schools is a first step to a much wider cause of diversity. For this, we thank the school board. We thank the superintendent and all members of the school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kunima Singh?
Namaste. Good evening. We are both, my son and myself, we represent the Schenectady Hindu Temple, also the education department in Schenectady, as I am a TA in the district. And my son is at Miller School, and we are all in for say thank you very much for making this auspicious and this holiday recognized in Schenectady.
Good evening, namaste, my respects to everybody. My name is Surat Singh, and I'm from Schenectady Hindu Temple. Holi or Pagwa is a festival of spring, the festival of love, the festival of colors. On this day of Holi, we meet others, play and laugh, forget and forgive, and repair broken relationships. This is a free-for-all festival of colors, where we smear each other with colors, anyone and everyone is fair game. Friends or strangers, rich or poor, man or woman, children or elders, teachers and students, and I will also include superintendents and parents. When this festive season becomes a public holiday, the celebration of unity, happiness, understanding in our community and schools will prevail. Please public this festive season so that Holi will live on for generations to come. New generations will also continue to celebrate this unity, love, and peace. Thank you, namaste.
Thank you both. Prem Prakash?
Namaste, good evening. My name is Prem Prakash. I am the priest in charge of Sri Ramunder, fifteen thirty-one Becker Street. I'm here to say thank you to the superintendent and the board of, school board, for adding that special day for all Hindus to be a part of. It is a day where we come together as one family to celebrate the festival of spring, the festival of colors. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Young?
Hello, everyone. I'd also like to show my appreciation to the board for adding this holiday to our calendar. I think it's a wonderful thing, and it's actually fitting with some of what I'm about to say. Um, it's out of the idea of repairing relationships and the idea of family and community and working together. I wanna to add some words to today's board meeting. Over the last, you know, several weeks, um, what I've seen, um, here at the board and its decision to, again, bring police into the schools, I disagreed with that decision at the time, I still do. Um, there are members of the board, including our superintendent, who disagree with me. I do not hate or want to denigrate anyone on the board or anyone who disagrees with me on that point. I think it's a point that matters. I think that, but I don't think anyone's evil for just thinking that, right? I think it's something that we should be able to work together on, work through, and discuss. There's data on both sides of this that's really important for us to hear, and when we're not respecting one another, when we're not hearing one another, so much is lost. Uh, you all have taken on the great, grand task of supporting and fighting for our students. This is not something that's easy. It takes all of us working together to figure that out. I understand that. And I come to this board, and I come to this board to talk about, when I see you and I make my arguments, it's out of respect and understanding that you all are here because you care, because you care about our students, deeply care about our students. So much so that some of you have spent years doing this. You've seen the ups and you've seen the downs, you've seen it all. But I come to the argument, I come to the discussion more to the point with that on the forefront of my mind, and I would ask that you all do the same with each other and with us. Respect our opinions, respect why we're here. We're not here for any other reason, but our really deep care and concern for our children. I have children in this district. One of my children graduated from this district, graduated college and is now married. And I, 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 I feel like it's really important for me to come say that, because I feel like it's gotten lost. I feel like we have begun to talk at each other, and I know I'm probably running out of time, but we may, we've talked at each other and not to each other. There's more opportunity for us to do this. This is not the first time I've come up here and said something like this. I'm coming again as just a reminder that we are, there are many of us sitting back and watching this and just wanting that to be the case. We're smart enough, we're passionate enough to do it, and I ask that the board continue to work together with betterment of our students, to put down, if there's grievances, deal with them, but deal with them with the idea that we are all here for caring for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Shridiri? Monkey Shortel? Did I come even close? I'm sorry. Why don't you please tell me what it is?
You can just call me Shri.
Shri?
Shri Devi, yes. I used to go as Shri Devi Rajkumar when I was a student here at Schenectady High School. So, my name is Shri Devi. Good evening to the school board and everyone here. I just want to speak from a different point of view, um, and thank you again for adding our holiday, uh, the Hindu holiday to the school calendar. I came to Schenectady nineteen ninety-eight. I was a student at Mount Pleasant Middle School here at Schenectady High School, four years at Russell Sage, and now I live right on Brandywine Avenue, where I used to pass by every day on the school bus, not knowing that I would see the day that the Hindu calendar, uh, Hindu holiday would be added to the calendar. So I really appreciate that, because I have four children in the district. I have three girls that go to Howe Elementary and a daughter also at Oneida Middle School. So with all the technology that we have at our fingertips, it's still difficult to impart culture, religion, um, you know, our four parents came from India in eighteen thirty-eight without YouTube, and somehow they still persevered, they still held on to our, you know, our beliefs, our religion. So this is why it's so important that this has been added now, because we recognize Christmas. We have a week off, you know, we call it Easter break, it's spring break, but it's for Easter. So now we get that one day off. It's a big deal, because we can cook together, we can celebrate together, they can, you know, wake up and spend the entire day at home. Sometimes it's a challenge to have them, you know, do like a vegetarian fast, you know, when we have a holiday going on, you know, packing lunches for four kids can get tricky, but, um, I just wanted to, um, just tell you how much, as a parent, as someone who has been in the district as a student, now a parent, uh, I really appreciate it, and I really look forward to the diversity that Schenectady has to offer, you know, as my children move through the schools, a lot of, some, I shouldn't say a lot, some parents that have moved away from the district, you know, looking for different opportunities here and there, now are envious of us because we have this day off and they don't, so yay. Thank you.
Thank you. Shri, Shri Devi? Devi, Devi, okay. A long E there, I guess. Okay, John Mudaviren?
Good evening, everyone. It's so quiet here, I wish we have this a city hall. I'm here to speak in, um, in favor of Holi being added to the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, and I wanted to express my thanks to school board members. Um, I know back in days, Ms. Lewis and I had conversation when she just started, first week in her term, the first term, I asked her to put this on the agenda, and we were too, you know, Schenectady was growing at that time and it was not ready. And I'm happy that Junior Hitlal and Ms. Bernice Rivera has took it on and continue to advocate for it. And here we are today, and a phone call a couple of weeks ago to superintendent at the right time, the right moment, when the calendar was being prepared, so that we get this holiday added and recognize Holi in Schenectady as a school holiday is very important, is very significant to the Hindu community in Schenectady, which is growing every day. And I want to encourage all the members on the board to please support the holiday, please vote for it. It's something that we have worked for very hard, and we intend to work and also continue to work on making Diwali sometime down the road a hall, a school holiday. Superintendent's laughing, but when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, John, you have one choice, because I submitted to Diwali and Pagwa. He was like, you know, you have one choice, which one would you take? I says, hesitates, and I says Pagwa, Holi. We're gonna, we're gonna live at one at a time, and we'll come back and advocate for Diwali, and I'm hoping that the board can continue to support the Hindu community in Schenectady. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, John. Savitri Rajkumar?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Namaste to all the pundits and all the Hindu brothers and sisters from the community. My name is Savitri Rajkumar, I'm Shri Devi's mom. I have six grandchildren. Well, four of my kids went through the school district, and I'm very proud and thankful to all the board members who kept things going and make it, um, successful for them. All four of them have good jobs, well, except this one who is a full-time mom. Anyway, but, back to the subject.
That's a, that's a good job.
That's a good job. It's, she's doing an excellent job with my four grandchildren, and I would really love if you can just, she gets everything she wants, this child. You know, we'll go off the map a little bit. She, she's the second child. She said, Mom, I have a big brother, I don't have a little sister. I got our little sister. Now we moved to Schenectady, and she said, Mom, I have a big brother or a little sister, I don't have a little brother. Lo and behold, little brother happened. So let me tell you, this child gets anything she wants. So please grant the wish to all my grandchildren and all my friends' children, because I was one of the people working with Mayor Jurzinski to get people up here to come, and I always sing the praises of Schenectady, I say, come together, we will build, and we will build, and we will, and now they're gonna be so happy and more thankful to me for help them come live here, and we have Holi. It'll be a big, great celebration, Schenectady will be on the map, and we will all live in a happy society. So thank you once again. I didn't come prepared to speak, but here I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Savitri. Oh, one, that's, oh, I didn't see this. Login Abadala? Login, sorry. Login? Oh, there she is.
Hi. I would just like to address a past comment that was made by board member Ms. Rivera at the last meeting. You said, and I quote, "The students are being prepped to participate in protests." If you find it hard to believe that students have minds of their own, then you don't know the students of this district at all. This would not be the first walkout this year. You also said, "We cannot have a board member actively encouraging it." The board member being referred to is Ms. Miles. As well as, you said, "A board member is seemingly using to promote their platform of equity, et cetera." I summed it up, because I have three minutes. But the facts state as they are, we wanted her intake to make this a more organized walkout. If the district wanted to avoid, which they did, which was chaos, during that walkout, you should be thanking Ms. Miles, because we avoided chaos. It was organized, it was dealt with in a healthy, respectful manner, and we accomplished that. I will acknowledge that you stand for the right to protest, and we appreciate that. But we, as students, do not appreciate the idea that we have to be inquired to stand up for ourselves. We inquired her, and you should be glad that we, as students, felt comfortable enough and wanted to make sure things went smoothly and organized, then that would bring more problems for you guys if things had gotten out of hand. We wanted to avoid the big problems that do sometimes come along with protests, as you've seen in, on the news, with fights and problems that ensued within the people who are protesting, as well as the people who are monitoring, monitoring it. And I would like to add on to Mr. Young's comment, um, earlier tonight about communication. Unfortunately, but fortunately, I will be graduating in two months from now, and I would be really disappointed if, you know, I came back and stopped by and things were still the same, and nothing has changed. I do find it critically important that we do actually bring the people to the table. I understand, you know, we did vote you in, and that's also important, but it's also important that our voices are heard at the table, because truthfully, for the state that the country is in right now, when you have your own agendas or your personal understandings taking into matters of your decisions, but without understanding the people, you go in blind. Someone recently said to me that ignorance can be bliss, but in this case, it would be deterring, and I would like for people to actually be brung, the people of the community whom are here tonight, so, you know, saying thank you about Holi and are helping you understand what their culture is about and what it actually stands for, rather than it being misinterpreted in the past coming weeks, the past weeks, sorry. Sorry, just one last sentence, if that's okay. But I would really appreciate, and so would the rest of the community, and you would also benefit from people coming to the table, because then it would be easier for you guys and easier for both parties, so you do not have all these sides against each other. You would have a united understanding of what you're actually fighting for, and you could fight it together, so thank you.
Thank you, Login. And that's all I have signed up, um, at the moment, so superintendent?
Uh, thank you, Board President. First and foremost, I just want to welcome everyone back from spring break. Feels like, uh, two weeks that we've been back, it's only been four days, or three days. So I always like to remind people that first week back's always seems longer when you've been off. Typically, we don't respond to, to public comments, but I do want to just take a quick moment to just acknowledge the, um, obviously, tonight the board will be considering a calendar with a, a new holiday that we're recognizing in this community. I do want to make sure that, um, when I first got here, one of the very first communities that reached out to me was, you know, the Guyanese community inviting me to the Caribbean Fest. It was actually one of the first community interactions that I had. It was amazing, it was great. Jamaica Miles was there, Bernice was there, Kathy was there, some folks I ran into, um, you know, right in, running right in in July in, um, in this community, and one thing that Junior, uh, who I didn't know was a board member at the time, he had came up to me and, and he kind of put his arm around, he said, hey, listen, man, we gotta talk. And, uh, you know, one of the things that was expressed was the importance of, of this holiday that the board will be considering adding permanently. I do want to recognize Bernice as well, who also reached out, once I got my feet settled in a little bit, and said, hey, FYI, we've been working on this. So I, I do want to uplift them, and Kathy, who gave me this much more elaborate DEI calendar that said, there's a lot of days we gotta start talking about. Um, and then I do want to recognize John, who coincidentally did call me right when I was working with our partners, and I, and I want to recognize our partners, because school calendars are not done in isolation. The public doesn't know that. They are bargaining units that we have to kind of work with, and, um, I say partners because the beautiful thing, since I've been here in, in Schenectady, is that everyone really wants to do what's right. Sometimes it doesn't always have- Sometimes it doesn't always happen as quickly as we'd want, but our Teachers Association, our Administrative Association really recognize the importance of what this means to our student population and our growing Hindu community. And so I do want to make sure I take this quick moment, just a personal privilege to recognize them, and I hope the board will support my recommendation tonight. Moving forward with some other general announcements, summer enrichment planning, obviously, has kicked off. Again, we're gonna have programming from July 11th through August 5th. We will have from 8:30 to 2:30 at all sites. There will be also some extended day programming available from 2:30 to 5:30. Thank you for, Ms. Miles, for that feedback last time, I'm sorry, Jamaica, I'm trying to learn. But our plan is to serve more than 3,000 students. And I want to recognize that, that's 3,000 students this summer. This district will be providing for 2,300 or so elementary students, 630 middle school students, and about 210 high school students outside of traditional summer school. So, you know, we typically do summer school program at the high school. This is a massive effort by our team, led by Dr. Kodo in his office. And I just want to recognize that we will be doing this programming. It will be held at seven elementary sites. There is construction going on at a couple, so we're gonna be doing Yates and Zaller at Yates, Woodlawn and Page at Woodlawn, MLK, Pleasant Valley at MLK, Van Corleor Hamilton at Van Corleor. And, and again, we'll have about 210 spots available at each elementary. And then there'll be another 210 available at our high school for some summer enrichment. And so there'll be some flyer information coming out, but I want to always use my platform here at the board meeting to let you know what's on its way, and we'll advertise, social media, all that good stuff. Last night, I had the pleasure to attend the Education Foundation. I know some other board members are gonna comment on it. I would just quickly say is, it is amazing to recognize the talent in this district. Three outstanding teachers. And so that's all I'll say, because I know other board members may make some comments. The Rotary Club, I want to thank them, they're making a $500 donation to Mount Pleasant, to the 21st Century Program, to get a community pantry set up and running for the school. Again, we're really trying to implement this community-school model everywhere, slowly and surely, before we really kick off the initiative. But I want to make sure that folks know, that we recognize the Rotary Club for that donation. Dr. Kodo will be attending the event tomorrow, the accepted donation. And I also want to congratulate Mrs. Simone Miranda, who is spearheading those efforts to benefit our kids. We had a job fair today that we participated in. We're recruiting already for staff, teachers, administrators, at SUNY Albany. So I want to recognize our team who was out there all day, trying to get, you know, trying to get talent to join our work here. It was, I think, successful, because we were at least in the building. And I don't know the outcomes yet, but I hope we had some folks we could bring onboard. We have 41 positions minimally that we're looking for, and so we gotta get a jumpstart. Athletic Hall of Fame reunion dinner was already announced. The tickets are on sale. More information, it'll basically be next year, September 19th, at the Event Center at Rivers Casino. I was fortunate enough to attend this past year's event, looking forward to next year's event. This year's inductees, if anybody is familiar with some of the outstanding alumni from our district, Jack Edwards, Ernie Marshall, and Casper Wells. There is brochure and ticket information already posted on social media and our website. This is an important recognition I do want to make. Not sure how much the board is aware and the community is aware, but most recently, over the last couple of days, there was an announcement about the New York State Public High Schools Association basically putting a moratorium on the BEED policy. And that is significant. We were one of the districts, I was one of the superintendents, who worked with my colleagues in the Capital Region to put out a statement that said we were opposed to this rule, we were impacted. We had one female athlete who we put the section on notice, section two. We told them that this was problematic. Our young lady was fantastic through the process, so I want to recognize her, that, you know, we've gotten some justice. It took a little while, but because she came to an adult that she trusted, we were able to let the district, the larger community know. And another community was impacted, and all of a sudden it gained even more momentum. But this policy impacted students of color more than any. And so I'm glad to see and that our partners at the New York State Public High School Athletic Association took strong action to put a moratorium on them, I appreciate them. And I look forward to working with them to service all of our student athletes moving forward. We have a swim clinic that's going on for our boys, our boys and girls in grades four and five. May 21st, May 24th, June 1st, June 8th, at Schenectady High School. Online registration is posted on our website and our social media this week. Want to remind folks, pre-AK applications are due May 11th, it's coming. Lottery's on May 12th, so get your pre-AK applications in. Again, a link and information is posted on our website, social media. It'll be in my weekly brief on Friday. Second to last announcement, do want to recognize that today was School Bus Drivers Day and also Administrative Professionals Day. And if you know anything about school systems, districts don't run with these people. Secretaries, administrative assistants, receptionists, support professionals. Without them, we can't do the work we do every day, so I want to recognize them. And then lastly, next week's a big week, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So parents at home, send a thank you note to the teacher in your, in your child's classroom. We will be thanking them as well, as an organization. So I just want to make sure that folks know, Teacher Appreciation Week, all week, guys. So get it going. All right, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Thank you. Erica.
I read your mind, I knew I was going first tonight, I was ready. Hello. No, I was able to attend the Education Foundation Dinner last night with a lot of us. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the three teachers, recognize your speeches were great. I feel like, you know, working in education myself gave me that little bit of gumption on my way into work today, so thank you for that on a Wednesday. It's been my word of the day, too, gumption. Now I give it to you, you're welcome. And that's all I have.
Priscilla.
I'd just like to welcome back all the students. We're almost near the summer. And I do want to thank everybody who's helped make a Holi holiday on our calendar. Junior, the former board member, and everybody else who came up here and everybody else on the board. It's nice that we're making history once again. First, we have all seven women, now we have a Holi holiday on the calendar, so. I look forward to voting yes for that one. Also, I'd like to say Happy Administrative Professionals Day to everybody out there. I'm just gonna repeat what the superintendent said. You can't do anything without them. They're the key to the, to this house of ours called school. And then finally, I do want to say the students at the Educational Foundation ceremony yesterday were outstanding. They did the catering, they served the food, they took my coat. They had a symphony, I mean, they did a really great job, so. And Laura Macy, she, she helped them, so it was a great place to be yesterday. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Nolani.
Yes, no, I wanted to just, most of everything that I wanted to say has already been touched upon, so I did want to thank the speakers for coming out today to share with us. Definitely looking forward to moving forward in that direction. Additionally, I was going to wish everyone a Happy Administrative Assistance Day all week. And, yeah, I mean, everything else was pretty much said, so we're on the homestretch. We're almost done with school, my daughter's counting it down. I think she told me the other day, there's 42, 43 days left. So we're getting ready.
Okay. Jamaica.
Thank you, everyone who came out to speak. I say it every time, because it's important every single time. We are able to be more informed and make the right decisions when we hear from the voices of the community that we serve. And even when we've already had something on the calendar that you are in support of, you standing up and speaking to us about why it's important also continues to help to inform us as we move forward and we look at what are the things we do still need to continue to change to be a welcoming, belonging, inclusive community. So thank you very much for showing up. And there are a couple of things. One, thank you for lifting up the whole BEED situation and helping us to fight back, because the Crown Act was passed for the purpose of protecting natural, traditionally black hair. And it was very alarming to hear that they were trying to roll that back. The Schenectady Education Foundation Celebration, listening to the awardees talk about how they came to Schenectady, how they came to be teachers, was, was great. And when they spoke, I had the sense of, I could see what it was like to be in their classroom. There was, there was this vision of what it was like, which was so important. The auction is still open until the 29th. So even if you didn't attend the foundation event, you can still support the foundation by going and bidding on any of the items that they have posted. There's also... Or it's open till the 30th. Anyways, just go and bid on something. There's an antique desk that I may have my eye on. They joked about it, but it was inside, you know, what was my high school. So I might be trying to get that for myself. I also attended last week the 2022 Northeast and Mid-Atlantic Creative Placemaking Leadership Summit. It's a mouthful. It's about the intentional integration of arts, culture, and community-engaged design strategies into the process of equitable community planning and development. There were people from across the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic. There were people from different states, in different roles and responsibilities. Some of them were artists, some of them were community planners. Some of them met this really great couple of folks from Cambridge, which is where my mom was from. And they own a bookstore, but that's not the only thing they do. They're community-minded activists who look for how can they unite and what are the different tools they can use in their community to lift up their community. So lots of great folks there. Heard from Philip Morris about what it means to be a key creative place here in Schenectady and some visionary ideas that he has. There was also placekeeping in Hamilton Hill, learning about an organization called Community Happens Here, how to create community. So really wonderful stuff, some of it's online. I'm trying to download and snatch all of it, so I can share as much as possible. And then something that's coming up is the Hamilton Hill Cleanup Day. It is Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you need more information, reach out to Marion Porterfield, because it is something that happens every single year. I will be there, I know lots of other folks will be as well. Then there's just one last item. I truly believe in our ability to communicate, as well as to be transparent in the work that we do. I am also hopeful that we will find a way to move forward as a collective collaborative body. With that said, I was given a letter that's dated April 12th, 2022, from Kathy and Bernice. And I believe that is a letter that everyone should be aware of. And it reads, "Dear Ms. Miles, we write as the officers of the Schenectady City School District Board of Education, the board, to bring serious matters to your attention. This is a letter of criticism, as permitted by the Commissioner of Education, for what we believe are matters demonstrating poor judgment. It is regrettable this letter is necessary. School board members, as public officers, take an oath of office to uphold the law and faithfully discharge their duties. All school board members have an obligation to act constructively to achieve the best possible governance of the school district. We have serious concerns about several of your recent actions and how they relate to your duties and responsibilities as a board member. By bringing these to your attention, our hope is the actions will be corrected. We aim to work collaboratively for the best interests of the district. Your actions, which merit criticism, are: November 6th, 2021, you participated in student protests over blocked scheduling, including walking around the high school campus while recording the event. Blocked scheduling is a matter that comes before the Board of Education for consideration and review. Your actions undermine board actions related to an important issue facing the district. Your actions also stand in marked contrast to the deliberative process the board endeavors to engage in. March 2nd, 2022, during a school board meeting, a member of the administrative staff commended students with perfect attendance. You publicly criticized the staff member for his commendation of these outstanding students and their accomplishments. It is expected the board members support students and their achievements. Any criticism of staff should be brought to the superintendent of schools as a personnel matter to be addressed accordingly. You did not do that. April 6th, 2022, you facilitated and encouraged students to walk out of class during the school day to stage a protest. The protest was at a time when students were otherwise required to be in class. Reports indicate you assisted students with their plans to leave class during the school day. Students also reported to staff that you communicated with them, including encouraging them to walk out of class. Encouraging students not to attend school is contrary to the requirement that all students attend school during the school day. Using students to further your personal and/or professional endeavors is also inappropriate. April 6th, 2022, you were on the high school grounds during the school day amidst a gathering of students. You were shouting slash yelling to students your thoughts and belief about Board President Kathy Lewis. You were denigrating Ms. Lewis in the public forum with students. You claimed she did not act properly at the recent Board of Education. Your actions are inconsistent with your duty and obligation to work constructively and collaboratively as a board member. As we criticize your recent actions, we fully recognize the challenges facing the district. With some, with them come difficult decisions for the board and staff. We support a robust dialogue and the rights of all to voice opinions. Simultaneously, we expect board members to act productively and constructively. The examples of your actions noticed, noted above are the opposite of this. We bring these to your attention in hopes of enhancing collaboration and moving forward productively in the best interest of the district. Should you have any questions, feel free to speak with either of us. Thank you sincerely, Kathy Lewis, President, Bernice Rivera, Vice President. In reply to that letter, I have the following to say. I have had time to reflect on the letter, as well as give further reflection to the words of my fellow board member Bernice Rivera. If at any time I've expressed disappointment or concern or been overly critical of the board in a way that was disrespectful, I apologize. My passion and the importance of the issues may not have shown up in a way that members of this board are accustomed to, but I always show up with the priority of the students, families, and larger community. This letter is the first communication that was any concern or criticism of my actions, even though the letter indicates that the first instance of concern was November of 2021. It should not have taken five months for you to communicate your concerns with me. If indeed, the aim is to work collaboratively for the benefit of our students, families, and staff, then would it not be more advantageous to first speak directly to me about your concerns as they arise? If I choose not to hear directly from you about this, I am left only with interpretation. That's not helpful. Similarly, it was not helpful that you chose to interpret a student's words of being able to be smart about a decision as somehow me promoting my platform. It diminishes my deep motivation to help, support, and keep students safe. You also choose to dismiss my care and concern for these children that has been evident since before I was elected to this board, before I had an organization, before I was the mother of four children. You interpret the student's words of being able to make smart decisions about the choices they were making as meaning that she is being prepped, not that they are being smart and taking their safety seriously. You took their agency. Additionally, you choose to interpret my intentions. You never asked me once about my motivations. From the student walkout in November to the article after the student walkout in April, you had how much time to reach out and talk to me? From the point of reading the article until the board meeting, you had how much time to reach out and talk to me? Let's not pretend that this is something other than your agenda. Then you didn't even have respect enough to actually call me in, not call me out. That speaks volumes on your position and how you feel, because that is opportunistic. Let's move on to the dates in question. November sixth, twenty twenty-one. While driving past Schenectady High School, I saw students walking out. I had previously been told there might be a walkout, but I had no idea of knowing when. This was a student activity just like other student-centered events we attend. I stopped to learn what was going on. I listened to the voices of the students who were sharing their issues and concerns. My actions stood in line with my oath and commitment to keep myself informed about issues concerning and impacting the students and families we represent. March second. The exact comment that I made was not to or about the staff. It was to the superintendent and about our policy and practice as a district. April sixth, as it has been noted already, I did not facilitate or encourage students to walk out of class during the school day to stage a protest. The students had already made a decision that they were going to walk out and had determined the date and time prior to any communication with me. Encouraging students to stay quiet and keep indoors as they have already done, which is what seemingly Bernice suggests I should have done, after they decided they wanted to do something else and it is actually an act of silencing their voices. As I stated just moments ago, and at the board meeting when Bernice publicly made the accusation against me, I am not using students in any capacity for gain. I am insulted by the accusation and defamation of my character. I was on the high school grounds as a witness to the student-led activity. When comments were made about the vote in the process, I shared information with the students. If it is the intention of this leadership of this body to remove me as a member, be sure that you are solid in your justification for overriding the voters of this city. That is all.
Thank you, Jamaica. Bernice?
Good evening, everyone. Um, many of my comments were shared as well, but I do want to talk a little bit about the Educational Foundation Dinner. Um, it was extremely inspirational, and I know that everyone mentioned the teachers, but I do want to mention, and I hope I pronounce her name correctly, Anisa Wahid. She's a former Schenectady School, high school graduate from nineteen ninety-four, and she owns Tara's Kitchen. And it was great to hear her story and her journey from India and, um, moving to Morocco, I believe, and meeting her husband in Morocco, and then starting Tara's Kitchen right here in Schenectady. And she's expanding her business all over the country, I believe, right? Or over the state. So it was really exciting to hear her and her journey in Schenectady and her relationships that she had with the staff. And she really highlighted the fact that the staff really, you know, kind of, um, made her who she was. So it was wonderful to hear her. And again, with the, with the teachers, it was Patty Wood, Rick DeCar, and Carrie White. Twenty twenty was Patty Wood, twenty twenty-one, Rick DeCar, and twenty twenty-two, Carrie White. And because of COVID, um, they weren't celebrated at that time, so they were all there that night. But just to hear, again, it was so, so inspirational, and you can feel their passion as they were talking about their experience as teachers and just their day-to-day interactions, because they shared a lot of stories. So it just, it was awesome. It was very nice. Um, I also wanted to give a shout out to Hannaford because they gave us a lot of money. They donated some money to us, and I believe it was for distance learning. So just a shout out for, again, um, supporting us and doing everything that they do for us. I do also want to remind everyone that the, the budget public hearing is going to be held May fourth at seven o'clock. Um, also, please check out Superintendent Solas' briefings on Fridays. It has a lot of information there, and it really summarizes a lot of the things that are going on at the board meetings, and there are links so you can see videos, et cetera. And I am very, very excited and very pleased that we are, that we have this resolution for Holy. It's been something that I know many people have advocated throughout the years, as people have mentioned here. But I do want to give a shout out to Junior. He has really been, since I've been on the board, he's really been advocating for this holiday. I mean, through letters, through, um, talking with former superintendent, current superintendent sending a resolution, um, for Dwali recently in November. So I just want to say thank you, thank you to Junior and everyone else too that supported John Moudaverin and has supported, um, Holy. I think it's really important, especially because we have a large West Indian population, specifically our Guyanese and Trini population. So I'm very, very excited, and I hope that it comes to fruition tonight. Um, I also want to highlight the administrative appreciation, um, or administrative assistance. Uh, they are, as people mentioned, they are the backbone of the school district. We can't do what we do without them. So again, thank you for everything that you do. And I do want to mention a community, uh, event on June eleventh on Foreman Street. There is going to be a block party. I'm not sure what time yet, but stay tuned. Uh, it'll probably be announced in the near future. So thank you.
Ian?
Yeah, I think most of what I was going to say was covered, but I did also want to thank, um, our three music teachers who participated in the event last night. Um, Rachel Gaines, Dave Gleason, and Tracy. I still call her by her maiden name, so I had to, I had to think. Tracy Gelson, yes. Um, because they were there with their students performing, and we really appreciate their involvement. In addition, I want to acknowledge that many of the members of the board of Schenectady Educational Foundation are former staff members here. So the president is a former staff member, Jim Macy, Tom Delasala, a former administrator is on that board, Agnes Phillips was there. I mean, there are so many, many people, and I don't, I didn't bring the program, but it, it shows, um, the depth of the commitment on the part of our staff members to this community that even when they're retired, they're still working to give back to our students. And I think we all appreciate that very much. And I was on that board many years ago with Bob Ludwig, who's got a wing named after him here, former New York State Teacher of the Year. Um, so it's, it's amazing to me how much, how dedicated our staff are to our students, even once they've retired and moved on. So that's all.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to mention that, um, I, I appreciate the communication on the Hamilton Hill Cleanup Day this, uh, Saturday, April thirtieth coming up. Um, there were several that occurred last weekend that I know I participated in. One was in Woodline, one was in Goose Hill. Um, there was a climate day down at City Hall, and there was a fourth one that I was involved in. I can't recall what it is right now. Down in the Stockade, there was some, down in the Stockade, that's what it was. So, um, we should be beautiful here in, in just a matter of a few, few weeks.
I did see you, I did see you picking up trash on Wendell Avenue, Kathy.
That's, that's right. And I felt every bit of it, too. So, um, please help, uh, clean up in Hamilton Hill and any other cleanup days. Excuse me, that may be scheduled. And with the wind that's been blowing lately, that may be a real necessity. I was pleased to attend the Educational Foundation, as has been mentioned, and I believe everyone has been acknowledged. I found it one of the more moving educational program, uh, foundation programs that we have had, and I think I've attended, uh, ten of them, uh, given that, uh, two years, uh, we didn't have them for the, um, pandemic. So, um, it, it really is an opportunity, and, and it, it helps provide the funds that have given some extras to the teachers who, you know, have arranged field trips or special assignments in, in class or needed special materials to do certain, certain items. And that's what the fundraising is for. And grants have been given, um, for many years, uh, in connection by the Educational Foundation. So, um, that's what I have. All right, moving on. I do, I guess I would acknowledge, I don't know, I think we're coming up here in May with, um, some of the events such as, I believe there's another theater production of the, of student plays. And I don't know what that date is, but I just wanted to acknowledge it because we have a few, uh, gap weeks here. Okay, um, moving on, we're up to tennis court presentation.
So as Rich Little and Alistair come up from SEI Design, um, this is a little bit more than just a tennis court, but the tennis court is one of the more important pieces to the presentation. Uh, board should have the slide decks and the board docs. Um, and so Rich Little and, uh, Alistair are from, uh, SEI Design. They're a new firm, architectural firm that we chose through a process earlier in the year. They're fantastic partners so far in the work, and they're going to give the board, uh, a rundown, an important update prior to them coming in June with the full building, uh, building condition survey update as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Rich.
Thank you very much.
Make sure that microphone's on so they can hear you at home. Yep, there you go. You gotta get it closer there.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Uh, we are very excited about the partnership and, and working with Schenectady Schools. Um, it's, it's been a great, uh, process so far. We're, you're, we want to thank the administrative team. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into the BCS, which is one of the things we'll talk about, but also a number of other items. And, um, as just a quick note for you guys, we wanted to share the, there's a tremendous amount of time and commitment above and beyond what all of your administration does during the day to feed us the information that we're then going to bring back to you as part of the whole presentation. And it's been a great process. They're a great team to work with. There's so much energy. We work with districts all across the state, and I just want to share with you how much energy your administration team has, building-level principals. It's been a great experience. Um, as Annabelle said, I'm Rich Little, uh, with SEI Design Group. And with me here today is Alistair.
Alistair Richardson.
Yes.
He's got a great accent.
Um, I, we're going to give you an update of not just the tennis courts. We're going to kind of cover everything here, just to give you an update. We will be back in June with a full presentation. Um, this is just a list of all the, the projects we're working on. There are a number of different items that we're working with your teams on to look at across your district. I'm not going to rattle all through them. We will touch base on a few of them as we go. BCS, I'm not sure who, if everybody understands what a BCS, Building Condition Survey. Uh, we've started that process in the short amount of time we've been here. We've toured every inch of all of your buildings. Our team, the people you see here on the floor are also the people that are out, um, working on the buildings. We all walk them, we're a part of it, we're inspecting all the spaces. Uh, we have done all of the interior, we're finishing up a few exterior because we were taking advantage of all of your holidays and breaks. Um, we've looked at all of your athletic fields. We've looked at your roofs on your buildings. Uh, our engineering teams have been out, so that process is well underway. Uh, just a couple of pictures remind you, unfortunately, what we're looking to find is our deficiencies. Um, just like our homes, we have challenges and things that need to be repaired. Same thing here. Uh, so we just have a few, uh, images. The one on the top left is special. It's, uh, uh, old breakers, if anybody remembers those, you know, the, at least we didn't find any coins in there holding them open, so. Um, but there are lots of challenges that we, that we have. There's lots of good things going on, but there's also things that we need to care for. And these images will, will help us as we look forward to the planning of what's coming up. This sheet here, please, is just a sample. We just want to show you some of the images of what, the kind of data and output that we're going to be producing. It's going to come out in a number of different formats. There'll be some key, uh, you know, I don't know which one is, just some bar, some pie charts showing where costs are. We'll break it out in different cost areas on buildings. Um, these numbers are not your district. I just wanted to kind of show some of the examples of, of the charts. The document on the bottom, uh, the bottom right here is a living document. It's a spreadsheet, an Excel document that we use that'll produce all of the data in one location. And then it'll be updated, prioritized, and incorporated as we move along. Uh, this document here is an example of what we started. This is your high school. We're doing a utilization study at each one of your buildings. And basically what we've done is we've met with the principals, looked at your buildings from a room-by-room basis. How are we using this space? What is the square footage of this space? What, how many periods is, is it being used? Um, is it the right space? How do we do that? And, um, we'll be coming back through, talking about how does that fit across district-wide? We look at standards from the state, um, paths and, and targets of what we're looking for in education, and it'll help us evaluate the buildings at a, at a space plan along with the building conditions that we're looking at. Um, all of this data together, you guys have done a master plan. You've had a master plan in the past. We're taking another look at it, stepping back, looking at where we are today. We will have a snapshot of where our buildings are now. What are the costs just to care for those buildings as we look at five, you know, next year? What is priority? Life safety, things like that. Are there items that we need to address? What does it look like five, ten, fifteen? Utilizing the, um, utilization study and also program and impact and information that we're getting from the administrative team, we'll be, be also looking at the program improvements. What are the opportunities as we move forward? And that'll open up a lot of other discussions at the board level as how we look at these buildings moving on.
I'm going to turn it over to Alistair.
The fun part of this. And so, yeah, this is, uh, we're going to go through kind of like some of the snapshots, some of the projects we've got going on just now. Um, the first one up here, obviously, is, was touched on earlier, um, is the, the tennis court, um, over at the high school. There is currently, I believe you have four right now. Uh, we're looking to upgrade this to six to allow for the potential for sectionals to take place on the, on district. Um, we went through a number of evaluations, or a number of different options, but we'd settled on, on this one, um, based on the fact that we're not having to kind of, um, deal with a lot of the kind of grade change on the field adjacent to the, the synthetic turf, plus the fact that we're able to kind of add more parking that's closer to the main entrance where the students come in. Um, we also looked at the, at the very real poss, well, actually, go back one second, sorry, Rich. Um, part of the tennis courts, you can't see it from here, but we also incorporated, um, pickleball into, into the tennis courts because you realize that there's a, a real strong desire amongst communities right now to, to have pickleball as part of, um, outdoor spaces. In addition to pickleball, we're showing here is two potential options for, um, for basketball. Um, what I should note is that the basketball doesn't necessarily have to take place at this particular site. We're evaluating all of your playing fields across your entire district, which is a mammoth task in itself. Um, we've obviously, obviously got playing fields over at Mont Pleasant. We have, um, the playing fields here. So we're dealing with a sort of master plan, um, approach where we're looking at what sports are provided at each building and then providing, being able to pull things back that you're currently kind of, you're currently paying the city to use spaces when you have a lot of spaces that we could make use of and then pull that funding back into the, into the district. So as you can see from this, this is just kind of two ideas of throwing out basketball courts over there. The scoreboard, as we know, is a, is a priority right now.
Just real quick, there's also some expanded parking that, um, yeah, I don't know if you saw that or not. I don't know if Alistair mentioned that.
If we zoom in, we can see it.
Yeah, so, yes, it's just, it's.
It's a little small, but you gotta.
You just gotta zoom and put on your.
The gray, the gray is a little blended.
Yeah, so the reason for the extended parking is actually we've relocated the parking. Because you've gone from four courts to six, um, the, the two kind of like courts that are closest to McClellan Street, uh, would end up kind of, there's, there's parking that would be overtaken at that point. So we then pull it down and add to it, um, and make the, just basically improve the circulation. It just means that you're now kind of more, I guess, as you see, it's more symmetrical with the, the student entrance. Um, so, yeah. Yes, although there is a net game, yes, yeah, yep. Um, scoreboard, um, is currently priority number one as far as we're concerned. That's, we're targeting, obviously, the, the graduation, um, date of Ju, June twenty-fourth, I believe. Um, we are currently in negotiation with, um, electronics to get, make sure that happens. Um, and as I say, we're proceeding with due haste. We, as, as I touched on earlier on with the, the kind of overview of all your playing fields, we're also assessing the playing fields over at Mont Pleasant. Um, we're looking through various options right now. There's nothing particular that we've honed in on. We're looking at, you know, funding strategies and what we wanted, what the district wants to do with the, the site there. Um, there's also adjacent city-owned site that we would very much love the district to incorporate if possible because, you know, because it's unused, really. Um, the clash, the, the other ones listed, um, are kind of areas that were highlighted on your, um, the, the kind of, the federal fund projects on your site and where we could put it. So right now, as I say, the classroom and learning areas we're evaluating as are all the ones below playground upgrades. Um, what I should note about playground upgrades right now is that we, we've had a team come out and review fifty percent of the, of the playgrounds available. Um, they will be producing a report to us just in-house for us to kind of start working out where, in order to create equity across all the, the schools, um, we need to see where best the, the federal funds can be spent to bring all those playgrounds up to, up to grade. Um, there will be an auditor that'll be going around at the beginning of, I think, actually, maybe the middle of May. Just, and he evaluates it from a, from an ADA standpoint, also from, uh, CIPSE as well. So that will produce a report you can have in hand to, to demonstrate, you know, that you're addressing any sort of safety concerns throughout your, your playgrounds. Um, the remainder of, of the, the list there from like outdoor spaces, um, and the kind of, um, the chemistry lab upgrades we're, we're addressing as we, as we see fit and as we approach.
Just, uh, reemphas, in our American Rescue Plan, these things came from our principals and site-based school teams. Our, um, anti-racism building leadership teams participated in their principles, and they provided feedback of things they would like to see done with the federal dollars. Some of these were also. Some of these were also important to the board members. I know, I, um, uh, I know food was very important to your daughter. So that's why there's kitchen upgrades and things of that nature. Uh, but also, uh, ADA compliance in our playgrounds at our elementary came up. So I think, uh, Parker Tech is the name of the organization, I believe. They're gonna be coming through giving us, um, a report. Some of it will be good, some of it will be, you know, some of the, um, some will be self-inflicted wounds that we've created on our, on our playgrounds from lack of maintenance and upkeep and things like that. But, you know, the hope is that we can use some of this federal dollars, not from our general fund or from our regular budget, to uplift these, uh, spaces. Some of them will be new. Some of them maybe need to be consolidated. And I would tell you, one that I see every day is the Mount Pleasant track and field, which I think is something that we really gotta prioritize because it's such a, a, a needed space for that community. And we have some really good initial ideas that we hope that we can maybe partner with our individuals at city council and the mayor to start talking about the fields behind it because right now it doesn't really get used. And so we think we have some really good ideas if we can partner together, really change, um, I think a community that could really benefit, especially our, um, our youth football plays a lot there. There's cheerleading, there's, so we really wanna uplift that as we try to grow, uh, our programmings across the, the district.
And as, uh, kind of Rich, uh, pointed out earlier on, some of the photos of deficiencies that popped up, they're, those are obviously things that will appear in the BCS list, but there are other things that, that kind of jump out and need immediate attention. Namely, right, as you know, Lincoln's boiler was recently replaced, um, but we're still having to deal with ongoing kind of emergencies. And in this case, there's three current live ones. Uh, the Fulton boiler, which boiler number one, I think blew, it's about maybe a month and a half ago. So it's current, fortunately, you're not, you're in the, the tail end of the heating season, so we can, we can get it replaced in time so that when, you know, when, I was gonna say, yeah, ready for September, October time when the heat's starting to come back on again. So currently we're, we're proposing to, to get a bid set out for that boiler and get it, um, replaced in conjunction with an SED submission to, to have approval, so you get stated on that. Um, there's also an ongoing kind of review and variants have been written, written up for the abatement of the crawl space in, in a page. Um, there's, there's consistently leaks along the steam lines, but you can't go down and repair them because there's lead, well, allegedly, there's, it's proven that there's not enough oxygen in the crawl space to be able to, to fix anything. So, um, we're looking to go down, put in mechanical ventilation to allow for, for more airflow, but also allow for, for abatement of those pipes so that repairs can then occur in a safe environment for staff. And the last one is, it's a, it's a kind of ongoing, um, issue over at Washington, Washington Irving, which is the domestic water line. There's, I think you may have heard that there's, uh, there's leaks in the, the gym area. And I went in to look at it. There's maybe 12 different clamps on one section of pipe that's only about maybe 30 feet long. So it's, it's something that needs, um, I think there, it, there's a real need for, um, attention on that, so we're addressing that as well.
The, the key thing to, to note here and why we wanna bring these to your attention is that you're gonna quickly see, as the state regulation requires us to come to you and get to you, seek a resolutions, board recommendations, board approvals, adoption. So we're gonna be feeding this information through the administrative team, working with them, putting it in front of you. So there's a lot of little ones that are gonna come quick. Um, if, as always, if you ever have a question, you know, we're here, we're available, we're glad to be here to, to talk, but Annabelle can get us at any time. He knows how to reach us. So, um, just to kinda give you guys a head up of, of these smaller projects kind of coming quick. But we just wanna give you a, a quick preview of it. Again, we wanna really thank you. We're very excited about the opportunity to be here. We really appreciate, um, what's going on, what's been done, and we look forward to being a, a partner with you as, as we move through. Are there any questions or anything?
Who's gonna ask first?
Go ahead.
What's pickleball?
It's very popular.
It is, it is growing, it is growing.
I am 47. I have no problem saying that out loud. I don't know what pickleball is.
It's, it's your 47, right?
It's, it's a court game with paddles.
Paddles.
I have friends who play that.
Smaller than a tennis court.
It's smaller than a tennis court. It's similar to tennis, but they use smaller paddles.
Bigger than ping pong.
And it's bigger than ping pong, but, so it's a cross between ping pong and tennis. It's like if ping pong and tennis were married and they had a baby.
I'm just, I'm gonna look out at the crowd, okay? This is not participation, but I'm just looking at everyone else's faces.
I'm gonna tell you what the kids told me. They told me, "Google it."
Google it. There you go.
I had the video and looked it up myself.
I have to say, it's very popular among senior citizens, I know.
I think, I think one of the things that's neat is that talking about it right now and looking at it as your tennis court is being built, this is the time now because you can stripe it and you can add it as part of its being done. If you try to come back later and do it, there's obviously more cost mobilization, all that kinda stuff.
And I think, and I think there was an article in the Daily Gazette, like maybe a couple of weeks back, about, I think Central Park is looking to add it as well. And so this would also give another potential location.
There, there's some courts out in this, you know, I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it was. I know I saw it in the paper and I'm like...
I think this is a moment where I'm just not culturally aware, um, about this particular thing.
When I hear pickle, I think foods.
I, I had no idea. I mean, if you would've said like four square.
There you go.
I, like, I think...
Handball. I was waiting for that.
That would make sense for, I'm, yeah, okay. All right, that was one.
I have a, a question. Uh, the ongoing project updates, the scoreboard and the, um, I gotta move it up this way, uh, and the other federally funded projects, do we know how much, uh, approximately all of these might be? And they're all out of the American Rescue Funds. In other words, we don't have to do any bonding ourselves for these as we might've had to do had we not received the ARP funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
But these do still need to go to, uh, New York State Ed for approval of designs.
Correct.
And, and that sort of thing. Do we know how they stand these days? I mean, we, we had paid, I think, some extra for some additional work that we had to get, get them reviewed, the plans and that sort of thing.
SED as of late has caught up. We track it on a weekly basis. We, we track all of our project status, where they are, where they are reviewing. I, I think we're at 10, 12 weeks right now. Yeah, it's actually going down. There's less projects in the queue, so, so they are moving a lot more efficient. Some of these projects, because of their status as being an emergency project, they're expediting them beyond. For those ones, we do not have to wait for that process. We notify them in writing of an LOI. We send them an email. We talk with the project manager. They agree with us that we can get going to get it done. So we are moving ahead with some of them before that process. But the other ones that are non-emergencies still have to go through that process.
Should note that the, because of the sunset, um, on, on the funding, they are, um, pushing the federal funded projects ahead of regular capital projects. So as long as we note it on all the SED forms and the paperwork that it is a federal funded project, it gets pushed to the front of the queue.
And just, uh, the money question, because it's always important, and the American Rescue Plan, and I'm, Terry, I'm looking at Terry just to confirm with me, but I'm usually pretty good with my memory. It's about $10.2 million we put aside in the American Rescue Plan to cover these things. Now, it could fluctuate. Something could take over more of it than the other. But again, the, the priority here was every school's playground was prioritized, um, creating outdoor learning spaces, um, looking at the high school cafeteria. Some of these too may shift through the BCS process. So I also want you to know that when the survey comes back, we may say, yeah, we put money aside here for kitchen equipment, but you know what? We really need to do a larger project and actually redo it. And so then we would shift some of the dollars, uh, differently. So, but I, this has about a $10 million price tag. If, if we were just to do, and, and I just wanna be clear, the Mount Pleasant track and field and, I mean, we put along for that about a couple million dollars and that was really a, a, a light estimate on our part, so that could potentially compete with some other things. And that's why they're here to help us break down, what do we wanna prioritize, bring it back, bring it back to the board, get some feedback. What should we wanna kinda go after first?
One, one of the key things we wanna share as we're making these decisions or recommendations as we come forward to you is that we don't wanna see things undone in the future.
Right.
So if we know that that kitchen has the potential to be changed or rebuilt or it's undersized, to go and put a small amount of money into it, unless it's small enough or only equipment related that we can reuse it, we're gonna steer you or at least recommend that we, we try to do something else. We'd rather see the money somewhere on, and that'll be with all projects. We're always trying to look ahead so that if we're going into an area, we're gonna do it once. If we're going to a building, we wanna be significant in those buildings and make those, make those changes at once.
One of the, um, comments I recall from several years ago, particularly with, around playgrounds, and it was a really touching letter we had from, I, I don't remember how old the elementary student was, but really someone who could not have access to a playground because he was in a wheelchair. And, uh, so we, we really would like to make sure that they're all barrier-free or inclusive for the children.
This would address that. This would, absolutely, every school would have ADA.
Just so you're aware, we've actually been involved in following up on that conversation and because our, our playground experts were out there and did the evaluation, either by the end of this week or next week, we'll be talking with the principal and looking at options there at that building specifically.
I was thinking it was Paige, but I...
I don't know that any of our, right, none of our playgrounds would allow for a child, as they are right now. They would not allow children that are differently abled, even without a wheelchair. Like with a wheelchair, they're not accessible at all. But there's not accessibility, there's, it's just not accessible. I'm just gonna tell you, so my 10-year-old does park assessments.
Exactly.
Um, and she has been doing videos for the last two years. Um, I can send you the link, but yes.
We'll connect her. She might have a future job.
She, she wants to do, um, park safety, something. Um, but back to Malia. Uh, she's not the only child that doesn't like the food in our district. Um, but I'm wondering, as it relates to like this intersection of possibilities, right? We, we wanna have community schools. Um, we need better food, healthier food, period, full stop. Um, there's outdoor learning spaces and our farm-to-school program, right? Like, looking at how those spaces could potentially work together. We have a lot of green space. I'm not necessarily saying that we should have a farm, but I'm also not, not saying that we should have a farm.
I've worked on two egg barns.
Yeah, and I think thi- this is just, um, when you see the building condition survey, it's gonna be a little overwhelming because it's gonna be every building, what needs to get done, what needs to not get done, and then what are, when you see the long-range master planning, those are gonna be where those ideas start to come into play. And then the tougher pieces, then you get the cost breakdown. You're like, oh.
Yeah.
And then you have to start picking what to do, but, um, I think you're gonna see that those innovative and, um, uh, creative ideas are gonna start to take place in certain places. The sad or the challenge will be is we won't be able to do as many of them as quickly as we want. And I would just wanna add one point here because it's not explicit here, but I think it's important to point out is that a couple of weeks ago back, Deputy Superintendent Rudnick presented the secondary school redesign. We've heard some kids talk about, you know, fears of like their school closing and things of that nature. While we're also exploring conversations around programming, we also have to think about what does our facilities allow us to support and, and grow? And so like, right now, if we were to, and I just wanted you to play this out, if we were ever to do anything at this high school, where would we put high school kids as a swing space? We don't have a place. We couldn't move kids out in order to do a construction. And so I just wanna plant that seed here because I don't think nothing significant has been done at this high school in quite some time. Um, at least in the last master plan that I looked at, the high school really wasn't touched much. Maybe a library, maybe something.
It's supposed to be part of phase three.
Yeah, and so it's, it, we have a lot of things that are gonna come up, like HVAC, um, you know, moldy smells and things like that that come up. Bathrooms, we heard from the kids, the conditions of our bathrooms.
The exterior envelope on two of the original components that are...
Yeah, yeah. They don't even make windows like that no more, right? So, um, so I just say that because, you know, we're trying to, the administration, myself, the team, we're trying to be real mindful that if we're gonna do projects, that we also try not to disrupt the educational process of kids. But we also could never do anything right now at the secondary level because we would have no place to put kids in this district. There's no like extra high school building. There's nothing like that. And so I just mentioned that because we're trying to be strategic while we think about the experience of our students, while we also think about potential construction that may need to get done as well, so.
Didn't we have trailers for, I'm not saying it's a solution, but am I wrong? Didn't we have trailers the last construction we, so kids were in classes?
They were outside the li, where the library is in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the states actually, the states actually nixed that.
Exactly.
The, the challenge was the state came back to us as an industry and said, "All right, if you wanna use trailers, you have to do this." And we looked at them and said, "Well, we've already, then you've required a full foundation. You've required hurricane, you know, all this stuff." The cost to do that exceeds what it would be to just build the addition. So that's where you see this happening throughout all the, the districts. We're looking for swing space. So how do we, how do we take a, a section of the building? How do we move that population to a different location potentially? And then how do you cycle that through the whole system? What, what worked best? And nobody can tell that better than you as a district. We're here to help you with some ideas and thoughts, but ultimately that's a decision that we'll, we'll work together on, to come with.
I have a question around the outdoor classroom tents and outdoor learning areas. If you can kinda clarify and talk a little bit more about that. And I know it's in the preliminary stages, but...
Sure. Um, the, there's lots of opportunity for it. You've got some fantastic courtyards that aren't being taken advantage of that we have potential opportunity to bring. We're, we're creating breakout space across the state in many different schools. What we're looking to do is, is not only a STEM space, but also breakout space. What you wanna do is create an area that's larger than a classroom where multiple teachers can bring a group together and have them collaborate on whether it's bringing a, a history and a science together so that you understand the connection between where the nuclear bomb came from. How did it get here? You know, the, you can tie the different classes together and do that in a flexible space. When we do it outside, what we try to do is make sure that there's some idea of seating, some idea of, of an area established large, large enough where you can control the students. They're screened from roads, they're in the right locations. We also wanna try to find opportunities to introduce technology out there. Is it power? Could you bring out something portable? Tents are an issue because it's a maintenance issue for you going on. Uh, there was a lot of tents done over the last couple of years. They have a purpose and in some cases they work. Um, I've done a lot with pavilion structures, uh, coordinated with playgrounds so that they're dual-purpose. I've built an outdoor classroom, yet when we come here on the weekend and we bring our children, us as parents have a place. Some of us have challenges with the sun, so we like to get out of the sun. So, uh, you know, there's lots of opportunity. We're, we're gonna try to mix that. We're gonna have that conversation and it's building specific. It'll be developed on each one of them.
And, uh, Bernice, where that kinda came out of was this whole pandemic proofing our schools a little bit to create opportunities if there, you know, there will potentially be more airborne type of op, uh, uh, diseases. How do you still keep kids in school while maybe using outdoor learning spaces? And that's kinda where that drove. And again, this was a request from schools to say, you know, I, I, Principal Flanders comes to my mind because he's got like this little patio kind of, uh, place right outside his building. He's like, "I want a screen there. I want an awning. And I wanna be able to have kids come outside. I want teachers to be able to read with them and they have places to sit." So, you know, um, we wanna try to honor that. And if we can do it, let's do it well. And let's do it though that we aren't tearing it down in five years because we didn't think it out well. So that's why these guys are here.
Any other questions?
The, the water line replacement, um, is there any impact on the, the quality of the water? Is there going to be water testing as part of?
Yes, yeah, it'll be, it has to be tested. They have to flush the lines. They have to clean the lines. They have to test the lines. They test inside and outside. So yeah, that'll be...
Because I hear it tastes horrible in certain buildings and so...
And just so you know, the building condition survey does the lead testing as well. Isn't that part of the survey, the, the lead testing?
We're required every year to do the lead testing.
And every, and let me tell you, that, that is a struggle nationally, lead testing.
So just so everybody understands, every year they ratchet up the requirements higher and higher. What we're finding is that even new equipment will trigger because somewhere in the manufacturing, there was something done. So it's, it's an, it's a constant challenge. We're seeing this across the state. It's a good process. And then we keep waiting to figure out when are they gonna find out that the numbers are so high, the problem might be somewhere else. But it, it is an ongoing evaluation.
I think it may, um, have alluded to people, the scoreboard is planned to be used in graduation, correct?
Correct.
As a, as a video screen, basically, is what it is. And that's why we need to get it in here by the June 24th.
Absolutely.
Or a little ahead of time for, for trying it. Okay.
Not, Principal Chang's gonna have to change plans on that day. He's, he's listening. He's ready.
Yeah, there's some training that has to go on too for that.
I would think. Any other questions for Rich or Alistair? Good to see you and, uh, we'll...
We look forward to seeing you in a couple of months.
See you again.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we have, um, our BOSI's Board of Education election vote. And both of these, um, have, are combined into our meeting at this point. We've usually had to have a short meeting, um, separate to do this. This is to, uh, provide as a component district the necessary votes for the BOSI's, um, Board of Education. Education and also for the BOSI's budget, administrative budget. It's not the budget where we send our students, it's the administrative budget. So I have this resolution for the Board of Education election vote, and that involves four candidates for four open seats. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
And second?
Second, Erica.
Erica, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have the approval to adopt the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three BOSI's budget. And I have a resolution approving the BOSI's budget for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Was that Princella?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Any questions or discussion?
Did they also receive NRP money, BOSI's?
I don't know that.
Uh, BOSI's, they don't, they don't.
They don't, that's what I, okay.
It's just a school district.
The school district, okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And you'll be reporting that, Martha, to them tomorrow, correct?
Actually, after the meeting.
After the meeting, okay. Because it has to hap- it had to happen today, the vote. We have the revised twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school district calendar adoption. This is a resolution adopting a revised version of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar to include the addition of the May twenty-seventh as a day for district offices to be closed, since we did not use all of our bad weather days, but snow days, whatever we want to call them. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Uh, it was, was that Jamaica?
No, it was Jamaica, yeah.
Okay.
All my kids said please.
And he's, I need a second, please?
Second, okay.
Erica, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that motion carries. We have the calendar adoption for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and, and I have a resolution to do just that. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second, Noelani.
Noelani, any discussion? We note that March seventh is Holy Day.
I just wanted to add my voice to those thanking Daram and Bernice for their leadership on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we, and is there any other further discussion on any of the days?
Just a comment of looking forward to how we can continue to move forward and, and be inclusive and welcoming and really intentional when we make these types of decisions. So it's super exciting to be here today.
Okay. All those in favor of the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Just a, one quick error, color piece, but I will get it to you guys. The, there is a half day that I missed for elementary. It'll be eleven sixteen. I forgot to make it purple and add it to the thing, so I just want to make sure.
Superintendent Conference?
No, it'll be a half day for Parent Teacher Conference for elementary. So I just want to make sure I missed the third day.
So it's listed, but it's just not color-coded?
No, no, I forgot to list it and color it. And I got a text from Juliette, our partners in SFT, to say, we talked about it, but we forgot to put it on there. So I apologize, but I will get that revised and get it back to the board for official approval again. So Martha, even though I sent you three versions, I still missed one color. So, all right, all right, so we'll.
And we had discussion about the colors.
Yeah, yeah. And I tried to, you know, you tried to do all these colors. And then just the last thing I wanted to do, you know, the hope is that the March seventh, the Holy Day stays. Again, I can't thank enough our partners with this. The teachers understood the importance of it, because obviously, they're working with your children, the administrators. And, you know, I think there was conversations around Diwali, and, you know, there's even, you know, Ramadan. We, we need to really start thinking about that. We have a DEI policy that really should force us as a system to figure some of these things out. And again, I think collectively, if we're willing to have some of these conversations, we can do it. So I do want to appreciate the board for supporting my recommendation. And ultimately, I think it is a historic day for this community. I think the only one in the capital region to have Holy as a holiday. And maybe New York State. All right, Junie, thank you.
Okay. We have a resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Erica.
Erica, second?
Second.
Noelani, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have our personnel items. We are approving consent items ten A one to ten C concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve these items.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice?
Second.
And? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. We have our business items. We have a donation of a thousand dollars. Oh, did I miss one? Where is the walk-on? There it is. Okay.
No, 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 it's there.
It's not. I, I was wondering where it came in, I didn't see it. Okay, I, I have a motion to waive the forty-eight hour rule in connection with this particular resolution. May I have a motion to?
So moved.
Do that. Noelani?
Second.
And, and second on the waiver? All those in favor of the waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so the waiver passes, and now we have the resolution. This is a resolution appointing a certain employee on a, on a provisional basis. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Jamaica.
Jamaica, okay.
Second, Bernice.
Any discussion?
Rebecca's amazing.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and again, I didn't want to use the walk-on, because we tried to avoid that as much as possible, but she's been patiently waiting, and we want to do this as soon as possible. So thank you for your support on that.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so that one carries as well. I do think we're holding off on purchase of goats and sheep, though, correct? I will.
No, it's just growing things. We're, we're not at the animal phase.
I know, I went to the urban.
We're growing things.
I went to the urban, urban presentation.
Growing plants. Not growing animals.
Just wanted to make sure. All right, we have the resolution accepting the donation of a thousand dollars to help defray the cost of attending a high school track invitational given by Friends of the Patriots. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
And second? I heard dual.
No, I didn't say it. I didn't say it.
Bernice? I'm getting a stereo here. All those in favor, is there any discussion concerning this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We also have a resolution accepting the donation of fifteen hundred dollars to be used for Scholastic book purchases at M.L. King Elementary School, given by Meg Levine. Was that fifteen hundred or was it five hundred?
Five hundred. But I mean, if you will it into existence, maybe it will happen.
I, I thought it was five hundred, and so that's incorrect here. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution for five hundred?
So moved.
Erica, second?
Nope, that was Bernice. I'll second it, or first it, whatever.
Okay, so Bernice, Bernice moved it?
We should just go in order, guys.
Okay, any discussion concerning that donation? We thank Meg Levine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We also have a resolution accepting the donation of a total of thirty-eight hundred dollars to be used as noted on the donation request form, given by Stewart's Holiday Match. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Noelani?
Noelani, second? Second, Princella. Is that, one of these was for the country, the pantry? Is that the pantry at?
Yeah, there's twenty-two fifty to be used, yep.
That you talked about?
Yeah, and then there's eight, eight hundred, and then seven fifty. No, and Mount Pleasant is Rotary Club, that's tomorrow.
Oh, Rotary, okay.
That'll be tomorrow for five hundred.
So where was this pantry? I didn't see the mention of what, what school it was.
SCLA is one of the institutions.
That was on, that was on another part of it, I thought.
Stewart's, there's three of them.
No, I know, yeah, yeah. But I didn't think they were all SCLA.
No, they're not, they're not all.
And I, I didn't see anything else noted other.
There's a social development classroom school site store.
But I don't know what school.
Oh, they're at SCLA, but they're in three different parts of the building.
Oh, so they're, all three of these are at SCLA?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, got it. I, that's what I wasn't sure of on those. Okay, so all those in favor of this motion to accept the thirty-eight hundred dollars for the three purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We also have a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax subsidiary proceeding brought by Forty Love Associates L T D and payment of refunds thereunder. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
We're all scared. So moved, Erica. So moved, Erica.
Who moved it?
Me, Erica.
Erica, second?
I'll second. Nobody wants to move these ever.
No one wants to give these money back.
All right, now, this one I, I could question, because we had our attorney involved in it, and, and I know Terry provided some responses on that, because we don't usually actually protest these. But this was so large, even in advance of the, what we're settling for here, that we had our attorney involved in it, was cut down, you know, in other words, we retained some, some of the money that had been applied for. So all those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And we now have a second opportunity for any comments from the public or board members.
Yeah, I do have a comment. I do want to say, as a teacher in Schenectady for eleven years, I was a para. I started off as a para, then I went into, I was a teacher for eleven years, then I was an interim assistant principal at Mount Pleasant for a short amount of time. And then doing the work that I do outside of the school district, I am consistently around students. Education has been my passion since I've been probably fifteen years old, and I used